We're ready, Mr. President. Are you ready?
Roll call.
Festerson, Garnett, Jerem, Milton, Paul, Thompson. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Fledges of Allegiance? And the Fledges of Allegiance today is going to be led by a group of students from Utahali Academy. They are going to present the colors today. We will pledge allegiance to them, we'll allow, pledge allegiance to the flag, we'll allow them to march out, and then we'll have the invitation by Councilmember Chris Jarrett.
Color. Carry colors. Ready? Cut. Forward, march. Color, halt. Left, face. Order. Colors. Ready? Cut. Present. Colors. Ready? Cut.
A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry colors. Ready? Cut. Right, face. Forward, march. Color, halt. Order. Colors. Ready? Cut. Fall out.
Well, thank you to the young women of Utahali, Utahali Academy. That was wonderful. Today is another big day, red color, Valentine's Day, so just wanted to give a shout-out to my wife and two daughters on Valentine's Day, and I'm sure some of you might want to join me and give you that gratitude and wish with your love and happiness.
We sound all sounding out together.
City Clerk certified publication in The Daily Record, the official newspaper, on February 10th, Notice where Pre-Council and Regular City Council Meeting, February 17th, 2017. A current copy opening Zach is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. Council, thanks you for being here and joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would encourage you to turn off or mute any electronic devices. Mr. Clerk?
Zoning ordinance on final regum planning board attachments, item five and six, together with five is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 19th and Corby Streets from R5 Urban Family Residential District and General Commercial District to R5 Urban Family Residential District, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is resolution that replat transmitted here with entitled Locust Glen, second edition, is hereby approved, a planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers five and six are today, proponents please.
Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Motion?
Motion approved.
Second roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Five and six are passed, seven to zero. Item number seven, ordinance to rezone an area bounded by Emily Jones Streets on the north, 38th Avenue on the east, Leavenworth Street on the south, 42nd Street on the west, from R7, medium density residential district, general industrial district and community commercial district to general office district. Property is also located within existing ACI 1 PL area of civic importance overlay district, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is resolution that replat transmitted here with entitled Country Club Oaks, replat five is hereby approved, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eleven is the subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers eight through eleven are today, proponents please.
Good afternoon. John Coolidge, 14710 West Dodge Road, Lamphrey, Neersen Associates, here on behalf of the applicant, Keith Basham, who's also here with us today to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I just note that we've had this case once before, and we have approved similar items like we had here today, and I remain supportive, and it's in my district, so I'd appreciate your support, and would move approval.
Moved and seconded to approve items eight through eleven, no further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Seven is passed, seven to zero. Eight through 11, or one case, eight is ordinance to rescind the planned unit overlay district for the property located southwest of 60th and State Street, to rescind the development plan, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. Nine is ordinance to rezone property from R6 low-density multifamily residential district to R3 single-family residential district, medium density, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. Ten is resolution that replat transmitted here with entitled Country Club Oaks, replat five is hereby approved, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eleven is the subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers eight through 11 are today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, John Coolidge, 14710 West Dodge Road, Lamphrey, Neersen Associates, here on behalf of the applicant, Keith Basham, who's also here with us today to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I just note that we've had this case once before, and we have approved similar items like we had here today, and I remain supportive, and it's in my district, so I'd appreciate your support, and would move approval.
Moved and seconded to approve items eight through 11, no further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Eight through 11 are passed, seven to zero. Twelve through 14 is one case, twelve ordinance to rezone property located southwest of 144th Street and Potter Parkway, from agriculture district to R4 single-family residential district, high-density, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. Thirteen is resolution to platent title, Wood Valley West is hereby approved, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. And fourteen is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 12, 13, and 14 are today, proponents please.
Mr. President, members of the council, John Fulenkamp, 11440 West Santa Road, here on behalf of the applicant, Celebrity Homes. Celebrity is proposing to develop this small triangular piece of property that's located generally in the area of 144th and Ida Street. It's a 19-acre parcel to be developed into 67 lots, come to you, comes to you with the recommendation from the department and also the planning board, and this just kind of shows you what the actual plat of the property looks like, and then this one shows you how it sits in with the other plats in the neighborhood. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 12, 13, and 14, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twelve through 14 are passed, seven to zero. Next is items 15 through 19. Fifteen is ordinance to rezone property located southeast of 165th Street and West Maple Road from Development Reserve District to R6 low-density multifamily residential district. Seventeen is to rezone to mixed-use district, portions of the property lie within the flood fringe and floodway overlay district, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seventeen is ordinance to approve a mixed-use development agreement, providing site development standards, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eighteen is resolution to platent title Ginger Creek, lots one through three, and outlot A is hereby approved, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. Nineteen is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 15 through 19 are today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Douglas Streason, 10836 Old Mill Road, TD2 Engineering, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 15 through 19, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Fifteen through 19 are passed, seven to zero. Resolutionary preliminary plats and subdivision agreements. Twenty is resolution for preliminary platent title Northern Hills Estates, two replat two, located at 12323 North 69th Street, along with attached conditions, hereby accepted in preparation for final plats hereby authorized. Public hearing on agenda item number twenty is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, here on behalf of the developer, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 15 through 19, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Fifteen through 19 are passed, seven to zero. Resolutionary preliminary plats and subdivision agreements. Twenty is resolution for preliminary platent title Northern Hills Estates, two replat two, located at 12323 North 69th Street, along with attached conditions, hereby accepted in preparation for final plats hereby authorized.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, here on behalf of the developer, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty is adopted, seven to zero. Item number twenty-one, resolution for revised preliminary platent title Pier 15, located northwest of 168th and Fort Street, along attached conditions, hereby accepted in preparation for final plats hereby authorized, a planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-one is today, proponents please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, here in 11440 West Santa Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is just a revised preliminary plat of the property that, as Buster said, is located on the northwest corner of 168th and Fort Street, next to the new dam site, 15A. I'm just happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty is adopted, seven to zero. Item number twenty-one, resolution for revised preliminary platent title Pier 15, located northwest of 168th and Fort Street, along attached conditions, hereby accepted in preparation for final plats hereby authorized, a planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-one is today, proponents please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, here in 11440 West Santa Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is just a revised preliminary plat of the property that, as Buster said, is located on the northwest corner of 168th and Fort Street, next to the new dam site, 15A. I'm just happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-one, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-one is adopted, seven to zero. Item twenty-two, resolution for preliminary platent title Spruce 180, located west of 180th Street and north of Corby Street, along attached conditions, hereby accepted in preparation for final plats hereby authorized, a planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-two is today, proponents please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Jeff Elliott, here to represent the applicant Spruce 180 LLC. This is a request for preliminary plat approval. As was stated, it's located just south of Maple Street on 180th Street. It's roughly 63 acres to be developed into 148 single-family homes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-two, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-two is adopted, seven to zero. Item number twenty-three, resolution for preliminary platent title Vantage, located southeast of 156th and Ida Street, along attached conditions, hereby accepted in preparation for final plats hereby authorized, a planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-two is today, proponents please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Jeff Elliott, here to represent the applicant Spruce 180 LLC. This is a request for preliminary plat approval. As was stated, it's located just south of Maple Street on 180th Street. It's roughly 63 acres to be developed into 148 single-family homes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-two, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-two is adopted, seven to zero. Item number twenty-three, resolution for preliminary platent title Vantage, located southeast of 156th and Ida Street, along attached conditions, hereby accepted in preparation for final plats hereby authorized, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. And B is a request from the applicant for a two-week layover and a continuation of public hearing.
Moved and seconded for a two-week layover to continue the public hearing on item twenty-three, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-three is laid over two weeks. Pursuant City Council Rule 70, agenda item twenty-four should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant City Council Rule 78, due to no meeting being held February 21st. Agenda item twenty-five shall be laid over three weeks to March 7th for publication in public hearing. Pursuant City Council Rule 78, agenda items twenty-six through twenty-seven shall be laid over three weeks to March 7th. Item number twenty-eight, resolution that special use permit application to allow transitional living in a general industrial district for property located at 506516 Crown Point Avenue is hereby approved, a planning board and planning department recommend approval. And B is documents submitted by Ken Buckner.
Thank you. The public hearing was held on 2/7/17. Ms. Melt?
Yes. Well, first, I just want to take the opportunity to thank all of the parties, and I know many of you are here, for all of the hard work, the number of the businesses, their representatives, the dismiss charities. I know Lindsay Corporation, John Day, a lot of work went into this. In fact, I think almost an entire day on Friday, I just spent the morning. But over the weekend, all of the emails that went back and forth, I really am hoping that there will be a much better relationship with dismiss and the neighbors now that you have gone through all of this. So, I'm not going to call everybody back up. I think that you reached some fair agreements. The operating agreement was modified, and I think the only thing I would like to do is make a motion to amend and add condition four, which just kind of, what we talked about this morning with Jennifer Taylor, our attorney, kind of makes, just so that the city, it's not mistaken, that the city is going to be involved on a daily basis in the event that there are any issues between the neighbors and dismiss. We want them to work that out more through the Community Response Board that they're going to set up, so that they attempt to work out any of the issues that they may have with each other before coming back to the City Council.
Second.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded on the amendment described as condition four, there's no further lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended, yes.
Yeah, motion to approve as amended.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-eight is adopted as amended, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Pursuant City Council Rule 70, agenda item twenty-nine should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number thirty, charred, 1150 Sterling Ridge Drive Suites 107 to 108, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, my name is Jason Coore, 2132 South 180th Street, here representing Cat Enterprises LLC, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item thirty, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-two is adopted, seven to zero. Item twenty-two, resolution for preliminary platent title Spruce 180, located west of 180th Street and north of Corby Street, along attached conditions, hereby accepted in preparation for final plats hereby authorized, a planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-two is today, proponents please.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Jeff Elliott, here to represent the applicant Spruce 180 LLC. This is a request for preliminary plat approval. As was stated, it's located just south of Maple Street on 180th Street. It's roughly 63 acres to be developed into 148 single-family homes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item twenty-two, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended, yes.
Yeah, motion to approve as amended.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended, yes.
Yeah, motion to approve as amended.
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Twenty-eight is adopted as amended, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Pursuant City Council Rule 70, agenda item twenty-nine should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number thirty, charred, 1150 Sterling Ridge Drive Suites 107 to 108, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, my name is Jason Coore, 2132 South 180th Street, here representing Cat Enterprises LLC, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item thirty, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty is adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-one, Hy-Vee Restaurant Number 2, 14591 Stony Brook Boulevard, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-one is today, proponents please.
Hi, Ginny Ward, 14591 Stony Brook Boulevard, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. I'm here on behalf of Hy-Vee to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item thirty, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Garnett?
Yes.
Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Move the approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item thirty, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty is adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-one, Hy-Vee Restaurant Number Two, one hundred and forty-five ninety-one Stony Brook Boulevard, class I liquor license, application new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-one is today, proponents please.
Hi, Ginny Ward, one four five nine one Stony Brook Boulevard, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three seven. I'm here on behalf of Hy-Vee to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item thirty-one, Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a question. Since this is in my district, describe what you're doing there.
So, we are opening up a restaurant.
I've gone there, right now I can go there, but you are modernizing it, is that what you're doing?
Yep, so we're putting in glass doors, the right side, so if you're familiar, you'll go in, the right side will be the bar side, and then the left side will be the same as before, you get food from any of the dining areas, and then you can go inside and eat. But you'll also now be allowed to go to a menu at the kitchen, and so there will be items on a menu, and you'll be able to order there, you'll get a number, you can go sit down, and then they'll be bringing it out to the table for you.
I know they have one similar like this on ninety-six and Q, is that the intent of all the Hy-Vee's is to go to the direction that they're doing, at the one on ninety-six and one on?
It is, this is a little modified version, where ninety-six and Q, if you're familiar, they have waiters and waitresses, ours is more of a still serve yourself, it was something that we've heard customers say, you know, that that's what they like. So they'll be able to go in, get their own drinks, sit down at their leisure if they want a quick lunch, and make it easier for them. So there won't be waiters and waitresses at this location.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. It's been moved and seconded, there are no further lights. It's been moved and seconded to approve item thirty-one, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-one is adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-two, Stephanie Moss's Salon, one hundred and sixty-eight eleven Burke Street, Suite One Ten, class I liquor license, new application, new location, there's a communications from the applicant requesting an amendment to amend the area to toll by fourteen.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-two is today, proponents please.
Stephanie Moss, Stephanie Moss Salon, one six eight one one Burke Street, Suite One Ten, Omaha, sorry?
That's all right.
For any questions?
Well, yeah, there's a lot of us in that club, too. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Move the amendment? Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended?
Roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton? Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-two is adopted as amended, seven to zero. Item number thirty-three, Murphy's Express at ninety-eight ten Reddick Avenue, package liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-three is today, proponents please.
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, seventy-one thirty-four Pacific, this is the package license for a convenience operation, these are actually a very big outfit, if you're in the south a lot, you'd be familiar with them, I have not been, but I've had very good communications with them, I understand they're a very classy outfit, and welcome to Nebraska should council approve and the commission approve.
Thank you.
And Mr. McGee, the manager's also here.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item thirty-three, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-three is adopted, seven to zero. Item number thirty-four, Old Mattress Factory Bar and Grill, five oh one North Thirteenth Street, request permission for a special designated license for a beer garden on March sixteenth through the twentieth, from ten AM to two AM with music ending at one AM.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-four is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Markin and Bach, sixteen oh one Dodge Street, on behalf of OMF LLC, and just by explanation, this beer garden will be enclosed, it'll be inside a tent, and the date of the music to be played until one o'clock will just be on March seventeenth. And so if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item thirty-four, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-four is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause an I place on the consent agenda to be removed. Item is removed consent agenda, taken up by city council, may be following the consent agenda in the order in which they are removed, unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items, item numbers thirty-four and thirty-five were held on February seventh, twenty seventeen.
Thirty-five and thirty-six.
Thirty-five and thirty-six, I'm sorry. Moved and seconded to approve, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Jaram? Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-five and thirty-six are passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers thirty-seven through fifty-one are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items thirty-seven through fifty-one, no lights, roll call.
Festerson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Jaram?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thirty-seven through fifty-one are adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule Seven Eight, the third reading on agenda items fifty-two through fifty-seven shall be held on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, the public hearing on these items are today. Ordinance is on second reading, item fifty-two, ordinance claiming necessity requiring property for the purpose of constructing one hundred and fifty-sixth Pepperwood Drive to Corby Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-two is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item fifty-three, ordinance claiming necessity requiring private property for the purpose of Westbrook SRTS Infrastructure Project and McMillan Magnet School SRTS Project.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifty-three is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President, just a brief dialogue on this one, either with Mr. Stube or Mr. Fitz or whoever is most appropriate. Mr. Fitz is coming down. So, these items are safe routes to school projects at McMillan Magnet School and also Westbrook Elementary School. I've been involved, in particular with Westbrook Elementary School, going back, I think, five years now, and it's something we've been trying to get done for a long time, which makes walking to school at busy intersections safe for kids, and encourages them to be walking, which is good for everyone involved. Also, another one at Westbrook, for example, would widen some of the intersections, allowing for a median to be placed in between the roadway, so kids can cross more safely, it identifies the crosswalks better, I think it adds some speed bumps on Seventy-Eighth Street, so also has the effect of slowing down traffic, which would be desirable at that location as well. Only frustration being it's taken so long to get done. So, we talked about this a little bit this morning, I just wanted to have a brief chat this afternoon, too. So I know you share my frustration in the federal funding cycle, and trying to go through all the steps to get this accomplished, but because it has been so long, can you kind of confirm what we expect the timeline will be here going forward?
Yeah, Todd Fitz or Public Works, yeah, councilman, I met with our right-of-way manager this morning, and he did indicate that this summer is not going to happen. We've got issues with the final design, we had a roadway come through a while back and had to make some ADA changes according to that, which is not on the final design plans, and that's okay. The Federal Highway Department and the Nebraska Department of Roads Right-of-Way Department that we're working with understands that, but we still have to comply with any and all right-of-way purchasing, procurement, and the procedures involved. And given the timeframe, that's a twenty-four month process and a federal process, it doesn't always take us that long, but it can take up to twenty-four months. And given that INDOR is involved in the process and the reviewing of the plans and everything, my understanding, after speaking with our right-of-way manager, is that it will not happen this summer, but he's confident that it will happen in two thousand and eighteen, and the right-of-way effort is ongoing right now.
Okay, so I understand today is just the next step in the process, which